The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
We have to change every couple of months.
I'd like to call the board meeting to order. First is our public forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board this evening? Seeing none, then we'll move to, we have three people that would like to say something at our open forum. As most of you know, this is Mike Blekka's last meeting with us tonight. And I just want to say, I've served alongside Mike all 12 years of his service, and you will not find somebody who has spent more time, energy, and has devoted his time to the kids in our district. And I would also say to the kids in all of Wisconsin, he served on the WASB board and was very instrumental in that board, and has continued to serve on their board of directors. He's volunteered in our schools, and he was doing that before he even started on our board. And of course, he covered education during his journalism career. So I just want to say that I'm very proud to have served alongside Mike. And I will certainly miss him. I'll miss his wisdom, his talent for getting to the essence of things, especially when you look at his work with the legislature, his work in politics. So just want to say thanks to Mike. And we have a few things for him at the end, and we'll present that at the end. And then I'm going to turn it over to Katie at this point.
So we're talking about the end of the open forum, not the end of the meeting, right?
Oh, well, that's why everyone's clapping, because the meeting's over.
Well, you got their hopes up. All right, because this is the open forum. My name is Katie Maloney. I reside at 1030 South Monroe Avenue, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54301, just to be official. And I have the pleasure of reading a note from John Ashley, who is the executive director of Wisconsin Association of School Boards, WASB. "Mike, I hope you, Marguerite, and your family are well. Your announcement of your retirement was bittersweet. I want to sincerely thank you for your friendship over the years in my role as executive director of Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Mike, without being aware of it, you exemplified visionary leadership, always leavened with a little humor. Please know that you made a positive difference in advancing public education in Wisconsin. You taught me the importance of always putting our school board members first. I saw how you always went out of your way to make school board members feel special and show how much they respected and admired you. You showed me through example that having high standards and principles makes any decision, no matter how difficult it might seem, ultimately easy. You always made decisions that promoted public education in Wisconsin. I wish you and your family, and you're joined by your lovely wife, Marguerite, only the best when you move into this new phase of your life. I know you will continue to be an ardent advocate for the highest quality public education for every student in Wisconsin, regardless of that student's zip code. I'm confident we'll stay in touch because I consider you a friend. Best regards, John."
Michelle is going to close.
Michelle Langenfeld, 2905 Shelter Creek Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Mike Blekka. Mike has served on the Board of Education since 2005, and during his service, he's made a lot of important governance decisions and advocated tirelessly on behalf of more than 230,000 children here in Green Bay, ensuring that every child, every day, has what they need to be successful and well-prepared as they pursue a pathway to college, career, and community in our diverse world. While Mike is not an educator by profession, he leaves that up to Marguerite and his son Joel, I've learned a lot from Mike. I personally have improved my writing skills since working with Mike. You know, it's really not hard to improve when you're writing, when you're working with an award-winning reporter, an editor, who has, are you ready for this, more than, not over, 33 years of experience at the Green Bay Press Gazette. Mike was my go-to, and many of us, our go-to editor for many, many different publications and things. And we're very grateful to have learned from you. I've had the opportunity to work side-by-side with Mike on many legislative issues over the years. And I recall our first trip to Madison on October 3rd, 2011. I was just in the state of Wisconsin in the district a very short time coming in July of 2011, and we went together to testify on Senate Bill 174, which was closing the loop on the parental choice program for eligible school districts to additional school districts. And I learned a lot that day from Mike. I learned a lot about the landscape of public education in the state of Wisconsin. But I really learned the important things about Mike, his commitment and passion to ensure that every child has what they need every day. That day, Mike's testimony was thoughtful, compelling, and supportive of the children, families, and the Green Bay community, and that never stopped. Throughout these years, Mike's advocacy for children and public education has never wavered. Mike is never timid when it comes to stepping up on behalf of children and the families he serves. He's not afraid to reach across the aisles, to share concerns, and bring legislators and others into conversations about the importance and significance of public education and the fact that we in public education welcome and embrace all children. And I think we'd agree that we've been blessed to have Mike serve on the Board of Education as the Board of Education's legislative liaison, as well as serving as an elected official and eventually president of the Wisconsin School Board Association. Through Mike's involvement as the WASB leadership, he was able to bring to the state level the concerns and the issues that the district's Board of Education, the staff, students, and families here in Green Bay. Many of the WASB resolutions are the result of your leadership, Mike, and the connections that you made on behalf of the district at a state level have been really invaluable to us over the years. And because of the relationships that you had and developed over time with legislators, it was really easy for Mike to pick up the phone and call them when we had questions or concerns, and in return, they did the same. Over the years, he's been the go-to board member for many of our local legislators. And I had one legislator recently approach me and say, "Michelle, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? I heard Mike's retiring." And I said, "Brenda, Brenda Warren will be the answer." And I did say that, actually. You know, Mike has spent countless years reaching out to staff and community here in Green Bay as well. He's spent countless hours representing the Board of Education at the monthly superintendent parent advisory meetings. He's always there. He's always there for our staff, our students, our community, representing the Board of Education evenings, weekends, grand opening celebrations. But he's also been there to do the heavy, heavy lifting at the legislature, in the community, and most recently, Mike has really been out there in front, telling our story as we've been out for our latest referendums. During his tenure, a lot of things changed and a lot of opportunities opened up for kids and to meet the needs of our richly diverse population. And the portfolio has grown exponentially while he has been here as one of our leaders. The John Dewey Academy of Learning, Leonardo da Vinci School for Gifted Learners, Dr. Rosa Manoka Hill, the Oak Learning Center Nature Base 4K, K-12 International Baccalaureate, King Elementary School Children's Center for Engineering, the K-12 Fine Arts Pathway, beginning at Webster Elementary School Children's Center for Integrated Arts, Washington Middle, and the Fine Arts Institute at East High School, dual-language, two-way immersion programs at Baird, expanded to Danes and Jackson and Wilder and Edison, a host of personalized pathways, and many notable, notable programs that have received both local and state, and even national attention. BayLink Manufacturing at West High School, City Stadium Automotive at East, the Culinary Arts Program at Preble, Certified Nursing Program, Bridges Construction and Renovation. Mike's passion for serving every child, every day, is noteworthy. His commitment to all children extends far beyond his service as a board member. For many years, people know that Mike has volunteered countless hours as a tutor, as a mentor, to improve literacy for our students at the elementary level. In the most recent years, he's served at Fort Howard Elementary. As one of the cabinet members shared with me, Mike Blekka, he talks the talk and he walks the walk. He relentlessly advocates on behalf of children at the local, state, and national level, ensuring every child, every day. And that's been his mantra, and he's instilled in that in all of us. Mike, words cannot express the gratitude for the extraordinary work that you have done and the many accomplishments that you hold as a result of you being here and leading us. And we can assure you, you have our commitment, and you can leave with the confidence that we will do our very best to continue the trajectory and carry your efforts forward, every child, every day. Thank you. So there are a couple of traditions that we have. One of them, people don't know what we do in closed session at night, late at night. We eat candy. We eat a lot of candy, and Mike's favorite is the payday.
That'll last.
That'll last two closed-session evenings. And the second part of the tradition, and maybe Brenda, you want to talk about the arts work that students have?
Yeah, for many, since I've been on the board, each time a board member ends their service, we've presented them with a piece of artwork from one of our students. And this year, we decided to do something a little bit different. And we commissioned, I don't even know the artist's name.
It's fair.
We asked one of the East High School art students if they could create a collage in dedication of all of what Mike has done for our district and for the state. So I haven't seen it yet. Michelle has.
And the artist has written something on the back.
Marguerite, would you come up here? Let's see if you can come up here. This is my wife, Marguerite. For those who don't know her, I think most of you do.
The ribbon was on that? That's Mike's using.
That's okay. And I'm going to read what it says. I'll slip it out. It's on the back, so you can read it. Later.
Oh, are you going to read it?
Yep. This is a piece of art done by a Fine Arts Institute student at East High School, Cassandra Garza. She begins and she leaves, this'll be in the back of the picture for Mike and Marguerite to enjoy forever. Art inspires her. She's always gravitated toward art since a young student and has expressed herself in many ways, including wall painting at home. She has created a unique tropical scene in her clothes closet, which inspires her daily. Cassandra sees beauty in everything around her that leads her to art. She aspires to paint more and is hoping to be able to sell her paintings. She's currently taking a design class at East High and is hoping to further her interest in graphic design. Cassandra has family in Mexico and will be spending the summer with them, all while expanding her artistic opportunities and looking for further inspiration. She's a junior currently at East, and next year she'll be a senior. And this is her thinking behind the painting. The painting Cassandra created is called "Every Child, Every Day." She chose the color blue for the background to represent strong leadership. The child logo included is to represent Mike Blekka and how he has held up the Green Bay area public school district as a board member throughout his years of service. The diversity of the student population is represented in the smiling faces of students being held by the logoman. The brown ribbon represents the roots of the tree, and the logo has some brown in it as well to represent being part of the tree. A tree represents the growth of the students and the schools, as well as the diverse students that are now attending our schools. Cassandra said that retirement doesn't end someone's involvement. Their work lives on in the lives and generations of those that they've served. In closing, Cassandra commented that she should thoroughly love doing this painting and strove for perfection. She wishes Mr. Blekka the very best and thanks him for all that he has done for students.
Thank you so much, everyone. This is very difficult. It's been 12 years on this board, eight on the WASB board, and it's longer than I originally had thought I would serve. When I first ran, I thought, well, two terms would be good. Then I said, well, okay, we're doing some good things. I'll do a third term. And then I kind of got locked into a leadership role at WASB. And I said, well, if I'm going to be on the WASB board to serve as president, I have to be on this board. So I did a fourth term. And I thought very seriously about running again, but it was just time. We want to do more traveling. We've got two granddaughters in England. We've got two others in the Chicago area. And we want to do some more traveling. But I volunteered in our schools before I got on the board, and I will continue that. I mean, being in the classroom is where it's at. And throughout all the years as a board member, that's being in classrooms every week invigorates me and reinforces for me why I am a board member and why it's so important. Public education is not my profession, but it's become my passion. So I will continue in many ways. If there are other ways that I can serve this school district, I will certainly do that. My wife continues to support some of our neediest students in her Head Start classrooms, and that's been an inspiration to me. Our two sons are an inspiration, graduates of the Green Bay Public Schools. Our oldest son is an artist, illustrates children's books. He would certainly appreciate that. And our youngest son is a first-grade teacher. He taught for 10 years in New York City, and now he's teaching in Chicago. So two more examples of the great work that the Green Bay Public Schools do. So again, thank you. It's been a great pleasure. We've done a lot in the last 12 years. When I say "we," I mean the board, administrators, teachers, parents, and students. And I think we can't accomplish what we want to accomplish unless we all pull together on behalf of our kids. And we've got 21,000-plus grade kids in the school district, and I'll continue to advocate them for as long as I can. Thank you so much.
Somebody tell him he has to stay.
All right, now we'll get back to our meeting. First is, all six board members are present today. Ed Dorff is excused. Also joining me at the table to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, Sandy Heller, our board secretary. And we have two InterCity Student Council members here today, Grace Sinclair, who's a senior at East. She's the president of InterCity Student Council. East.
Preble.
Preble.
She's a junior Preble.
Oh, I got everything wrong.
It was close.
It's a little tough right now.
My mouth and my brain are not working together. And then Roman McKenna, who is from West, right? Yeah, welcome. McKenna, Roman. Okay, gosh, it's time for me to go home.
It's her that you said.
You have it right. I didn't have my glasses on. Blame it on that. All right, then first we have our Teaching and Learning Work Session. That'll be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have four discussion items. The first one will be an update on Turbocharge. Lori Peacock is my friend, joining us.
Good evening, everybody. Thank goodness we're here with you again. We have Lori and myself. Congratulations, Lori, for your service over the years. We certainly will miss you.
Thank you.
In spending a few minutes with you tonight, I want to talk a little bit about the progress we've been making with the Turbocharge work. Turbocharge, we'll talk a little bit more about that momentarily. It ties back to our district mission, which we're all familiar with, and the district priorities and strategic framework that have been laid out accordingly. Turbocharge is a title of a, I hesitate to call it initiative because we certainly seek for it to be the new normal in terms of a relationship that we have been forging with NWTC and UW-Green Bay. We're here tonight to talk a little bit about the current status and next steps of Turbocharge, of which there have been a lot of things in the works lately. And we're so excited to share with you a brief update around that and entertain any questions that you may have. So what is Turbocharge? As a reminder for our viewing public and a refresher for anybody at the table or in the audience tonight, Turbocharge reflects the revving up, if you will, of a partnership between the Green Bay area public schools, NWTC, and UW-Green Bay. Our goal is to ensure that all of our students coming out of our school district are not only college, career, and community-ready, but are able to matriculate into post-secondary educational opportunities and to work collaboratively with our post-secondary partners to ensure that there's a joint responsibility for ensuring that that happens. So we've been taking a look at a vision statement for Turbocharge and saying, what sorts of strategic actions do we need to take to ensure that this can actually happen? The vision statement with Turbocharge is that all of our students will enroll in and complete a post-secondary credential, and by all we mean every, including students that may typically be underrepresented in post-secondary opportunities, so students from all demographics. And again, that's just a bit of a reminder of what Turbocharge is. We've outlined recently again that some of the strategic goals and measures that we will hold ourselves accountable to include that students are entering college without the need for remedial or non-credentialed coursework, that kids go in having earned 15 college credits or the equivalent from their high school experience, that financial aid is not a barrier, but rather a tool and a support system that's in place for them. We also want to support students, if at all possible, enrolling in the year that they graduate from high school. We've heard of folks taking gap years, and while that may be appropriate for some students, we also know that sometimes a gap year might turn into a gap couple of years or a gap decade. And if we don't support students in finding access to that post-secondary route right after high school, it may be much more difficult to get back in the game down the road. If we know how to do this, we need to have a data system in place that allows us to analyze the work that we're doing and ensure that we have high-impact practices for post-secondary success. I think the evidence is clear that college credit in high school is a key to helping us achieve our vision relative to Turbocharge and to support students graduating from our schools in alignment with our district mission. There are many, many pieces of evidence behind why an initiative such as Turbocharge makes sense, a college-going culture in high school, providing dual-credit offerings is a nationwide trend right now. And when students get in the game early, it helps reduce time and cost in the long term. And we believe that students understanding how to navigate post-secondary education can certainly begin in high school or even earlier with pre-college programming. So where are we today relative to this? We have shared with folks over the past few months kind of updates on the dual-credit or equivalent offerings that we have in the areas of advanced placement, and International Baccalaureate, Project Lead the Way. These are all college-equivalent courses that we offer throughout our high school experience where students, based on their external exam scores, can earn transferable advanced standing or credit in a college that they choose. It may vary by institution, but the courses associated with these programs are widely accepted across the state of Wisconsin, as well as across the United States. In addition, we have been formalizing a number of partnerships and programs that include dual-credit opportunities as part of industry certifications, I'm sorry, that also include industry certifications, as well as arrangements with local community businesses and other partners. Laurie's can talk a little bit more about that, as well as what else is in progress relative to the communication and the work of the rest of the teams associated with Turbocharge. There's your clicker. Right side. There you go.
So we have been working on Turbocharge for almost two years, and as part of that work, we have a number of subcommittees that are up and running. The committee that was probably most influential at this point has been our communications subcommittee. The communications subcommittee, again, has representatives from Green Bay area public schools, UW-Green Bay, and NWTC. We meet rather regularly, and as you can see, we have a lot of different things that we have put into place in the last year. First of all, we needed to have a name and a logo, so the Turbocharge logo that you saw at the beginning of the presentation was developed by this committee. We developed a partnership flyer and brochure. We developed a video. We created a website. Next week, when we roll out Turbocharge at Washington Middle School, all of our sixth graders will have a Turbocharge t-shirt, as will the staff. We have in-progress banners that will be rolled out next week. We have a social media plan. And then as we continue to move forward, we will have media interviews with our sponsors. The communications subcommittee will meet again in May and develop a communications plan now that we've launched for the 2017-2018 school year. We have had two large events as a way to roll out Turbocharge to our community. The first one was, there was a legislative luncheon held at NWTC last month. And prior to the luncheon, 11 different legislators met with Dr. Langenfeld, Dr. Raffin, and Dr. Miller so that they could understand the mission and vision of Turbocharge. On the 28th, we had about 25 businesses attend a business briefing because business is really our fourth partner in Turbocharge and will play a big role in helping support not only our students' education, but also their workforce development so that we can keep students here in the Green Bay area and Brown County. And next week, we're excited to have a community announcement at Washington Middle School. So imagine 300 sixth graders in the bleachers at Washington Middle School. We'll have the jazz band playing to greet everybody. Parents will be invited, as well as individuals from all three organizations will be sitting there, as well as parents. And really, the focus of this announcement is really talking to our students about the important role that they play in our community and how Turbocharge will support their academic and career plan. and career plan, with the ultimate goal that this is the class of 2023 and that all of them will graduate with at least 15 college credits. So it's pretty exciting. So we're very excited about that rollout. And I think, next is you.
Lauren. Some of the strategic actions, in addition to what you've heard relative to communication and data sharing, we know that we need to focus on our efforts related to intervention remediation. By that we mean ensuring that students are not falling behind, or if they start to fall behind, how do we step in more quickly? Transitioning successfully between levels, whether it be elementary to middle, middle to high school, or high school to post-secondary, or between technical college and university. Ensuring that we have pathways that are well-developed, viable, and sustainable. And like Laurie mentioned, making sure that our communications to our key stakeholders are consistent, clear, and persistent as well, and that we have a data-sharing agreement in place. So we've got teams in place working on those features. I can briefly show you the next three slides to kind of prove that we have some specifics, some meat on the bone, if you will, relative to a timeline over the next year or so for each of the areas that we've articulated here. There are key actions that will be taking place pretty much monthly, where subcommittees will be working to move the Turbo Charge work forward. In some cases, it's doing new things. In some cases, it's learning about things. In some cases, it's simply coordinating and clarifying the use of certain terminology or processes in some cases. So here is, for instance, a remediation intervention action plan that three organizations are going to be engaging in over the next year. We've got a transition services group that will be focusing on the work that we're doing with academic and career planning in our district and how that pertains to our work with NWTC and UW-Green Bay. We also have one where we're looking at the role of the folks that serve in support areas relative to helping students transition successfully, like I said. And we also have, on the side, without specific timelines per se, with specific actions because it folds somewhat into the work that we are already doing, or due to capacity, we're going to keep things on hold for a little bit, areas of some of our pre-college programming efforts, and the way that we are evaluating, creating, and revising our K-12 pathways that exist. So the first one is one that we're kind of gonna take a look at and ensure that we have the right capacity in place before we go gangbusters on that one. And the second one is going to be folded in more naturally into the work that we are already doing. As you may recall, and I'll skip ahead, we're getting a little short on time, kind of in closing, it's a combination of work between our community partners, folks at all levels of pre-K-12 education, and in the post-secondary to select viable programs of study that connect to post-secondary credentials and life-sustaining, rewarding careers. And so we are being very intentional and strategic about the types of programs of study that we can support in our district, and we are working really hard at making user-friendly visuals presentable to students and families and representative to the school district and at the school level, so that when students select classes beginning in middle school and in high school, that they can see where those courses lead, what credentials, certifications, and credits are associated with each. We look forward to enhancing those in the future. And with that, we would open it up for any questions or comments or any additional remarks from district folks at the table.
If I could just share with the board, I know that many of you had the opportunity to hear, we've had the academic career plan discussion here at the board table, and we've had, we had a briefing on Turbo Charge quite a while ago with Chancellor Miller and President Raffin from the Technical College. And this has been just a tremendous effort on the part of so many and a lot of hard work outside of me, but shepherding this through. I think what's unique about it is the fact that we do have three institutions coming together, really learning about each other. I think last year was a lot of hard work just determining what was possible. And I think that now is, and I have to commend Lori and Mike for this, because a lot of this just unfolded and folded to Dr. Raffin, myself, and the Chancellor Miller. Greg Davis represented, he's the provost at the university, on Friday, looking at all of those pieces. So that's why it didn't come in a PowerPoint, because we were here till 4:00 looking at it. So they were very flexible, but I was a little concerned as we've got envisioned, if you will, how many hundreds of children in Turbo Charge shirts in the sixth grade over at Washington. I wanted to make sure that the board was apprised of that opportunity and that we'll be geared up for next year as we begin the class of 2023. Well, so just background on that. So thank you.
Brenda.
Can you give an example of when you say you have data-sharing agreements between the three institutions, what kinds of data will be shared and how will they be used to, you know?
That's a really good question. In fact, we have a data-sharing subcommittee. We've met once, working with Melissa and with Stephen Miller, and really looking at what can we, what should we share? What can we share? And also, when is that data available? Because every organization releases data at different times. So there are things you can currently get off of Wise Dash, but if we wanted to drill deeper into why are there certain students that are not being successful in college and wanted to go beyond what's on Wise Dash, we need a data-sharing agreement so we can look at a deeper level of data.
An additional example would be for any of our dual-credit courses, if the instructors at either NWTC or UW-Green Bay are leveraging an online learning management system and need to share materials with high school teachers, now you've got staff members associated with different, right, online databases. How do we make sure that we are following the rules there and that we're all clear on how to function properly in that learning management system, whether it be course syllabus, course materials, or what would the student data side of that be as well?
Thanks. Melissa, would you have anything to add from your experience so far?
I think the tricky thing here will be the how we can share data, especially when we're talking about student personally identifiable information.
I think we're all coming to the table with the understanding that we want to share the data. It's just finding the vehicle to do so. We have a lot of good minds. UWGB has their council at the table as well, so we're really working on trying to be able to solve that issue.
Any other questions? I just want to make note, the example that you gave of the manufacturing, is this you? The breakfast that was at Heritage Hill, several, I happened to be at a table with a person from NWGB, someone from NWTC, and then several business people, and they were all very interested in reading, and they appreciated the fact that all this communication is happening amongst the participants. It was well-received, and thank you for that.
Yeah, the team did a nice job with that. Those materials are located within our publicly-available Student Academic and Career Planning Guide at www.gvaps.org. Check it out.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Our next discussion item will be the honor rolls policy. And I've been looking at Kim and Melissa.
Yep, I'm just gonna kick it off, and if you have specific questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mangus to answer your questions. So this policy is really being updated because when the board adopted the changes to the grading policy, unfortunately, we overlooked the honor roll policy, and changes were not made to reflect the changes to the grading policy. So for example, the existing honor roll policy indicates that pluses and minuses will not count for honor roll, and as you know, our new grading structure includes pluses and minuses and computing grade point average. So the policy was updated, reorganized a little bit to provide better clarity and transparency to our families who are reading it, and then incorporates the new grading policy.
Any questions or concerns?
This is something that the Intercity Student Council has talked about for many years, and I know they're very pleased with this change.
All right. You can't read it?
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say the brow is furrowed, so I don't know how pleased, but it's a matter of reading.
I shouldn't read it.
Brenda, can you? Is it, can you bring it up with your computer?
Can you pull it up on your computer? No.
I can give you my copies.
Okay, she's got copies.
Here, go give me copies.
You wanna strain your eyes, Chris.
No.
Neptune is public.
You don't have that access on Neptune.
The general public should, I mean, there's levels, there's levels.
Right. But you, this would be on Neptune. Yeah.
Yeah, this is on Neptune.
Yeah.
Public access, right?
Right.
So basically, what it does is it allows us to consider the pluses and minuses for grade rather than just the straight letter grade. So if you get a C+, it counts as a little more than a C. So that's something that the Intercity Student Council has been really interested in having included, something we wanted to make sure that our policies were aligned with our grading practices and making sure that it's as fair as possible as far as recognition of student performance.
I believe it also includes the fact that you need to be a full-time student for the honor roll preparation versus Melissa takes one class and hits the A, and then I take five and she has a higher honor roll than I do. So I think that was another component.
Right. Any other questions? Chris?
Thank you. It's a matter of point, I don't know if it needs to be changed or thought about later, but we have homineral two implementation at the end of the first and second semesters for honor roll. For the sake of argument, let's say we have this campus, it was a trimester. Do you just come back and revisit it at that time, or should we change the wording here to say at the end of each semester?
Well, if we are in trimester, though, it would be trimester, right? If we were on trimester, then it would need to say trimester, correct? Or should it just say at the end of each term?
At the end of each semester.
Or it's term.
Mester would be two, trimester would be three, term could be either word.
Yeah.
So it's a say at the end of each term.
So I think term would be a broader term.
Actually, I have to revisit that later on.
Good point. Anything else? Here we go, we'll move that forward. Thanks, Melissa and Kim. Then we have the homeless students policy.
Okay, I'll kick this one off as well, and we have other staff members who are here to answer questions as well. We will be bringing this summer a policy on foster care students. The ESSA this year changed the law regarding our homeless students, the McKinney-Vento law.
An ESSA is?
ESSA is elementary, secondary.
Secondary, school, education.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Elementary or not.
It's right up there. Oh, great, thank you. I resorted to C.
Oh, I misjudged it. We weren't even close.
I'm sorry.
Well, that's the old one.
Yes, we're going with that, yeah. ESEA.
ESEA.
Under the previous law, students who were waiting to be placed in foster care were considered to be homeless students. The law has now changed, and they are no longer considered homeless students. In addition, the law also clarified various different provisions regarding the differentiation between McKinney-Vento and foster care. So the McKinney-Vento or homeless student policy needed to be updated to reflect those changes. In updating the policy, we, if you've noticed in the policies that we brought forward to you, we're trying to put the definitions section in the policy because the definitions govern both the policy and the rule. So we're pulling that out of the rule, putting those in the policy to guide the board's work and to structure the policies and the rules in accordance with that. So we pulled those definitions, put those in the policy, and then included what we, is more policy language in the policy, and then left the rule to the implementation or the guidance to the policy. So those are largely the changes to this policy.
Any questions or concerns? Here we go, we'll move that forward. Thanks, Melissa. And then student use of communication devices policy.
Okay, I'll introduce this again, and if we have any questions, Nikki and Angela are here as well to answer any of your questions. The laws have changed a little bit with respect to appropriate and acceptable uses of student two-way communication devices in schools, and so we needed to update the policy to reflect those changes. The policy has done that. It's also, again, provided further clarification as to when two-way communication devices can be used in schools and when they would be prohibited for such use. And we're bringing those changes through the policy and the rule.
Any questions or concerns?
Yes, I do have a few. I'd like to talk more about staff confiscating a device, and it's for, it's for two reasons. I mean, yes, it's, yes, it's about the student's device, but it's also about protecting our staff from, you broke it, you snooped in it, you did this, you did that. And I'm just wondering, what situation would there be that would be so urgent that our, why would our staff be taking a device into their hand physically and taking it out of a student's hand rather than waiting for law enforcement for that?
So it would depend on the circumstances. In very few circumstances would there be a situation in which we would want a staff member to do that. We especially would not want a staff member to forcibly be taking a phone or other device out of a student's hand. I mean, I think we could think of strange circumstances where if somebody was trying to hit somebody with a phone or something, or use it as a weapon, that you might want to consider that, that particular case. But as far as confiscation of a phone, we would want that to be done. You know, there would be opportunities where a teacher may ask a student for a phone if it's becoming a distraction and hold that or have it sent to the office. But in other circumstances where we needed the phone removed, we would refer that to administration or the police if needed.
Is that, there's not much, there's not much limitation in that as the policy's written. It says a device may be confiscated if the principal or the designee, almost, and then the next phrases would allow almost anything.
So it's the principal or the designee. It doesn't talk about teachers in classrooms. It talks about the principal.
Okay. If it harms others or violates policy or interferes with a positive learning environment. So it, I could interpret that as the principal could take it for virtually any reason.
Well, taking it, taking it and searching it are two different things. So taking it in, just as if a child was using something else in the classroom that was inappropriate, taking it and giving it back at the end of the day is...
Yeah, I get that, and I'll come back to searching later, but, I don't know, if I'm using it, and again, do I, you know, I don't, I don't ask these things because I think that administrators are just looking to rapidly start taking devices. I know they're not. I want, I just want the, I like the policy language to match what we're, what we're really going to do. And if it's, okay, if it harms others, someone is cyberbullying, sending threats, then sure. If it's violating a specific policy, sure. But interferes with a, interferes with a positive learning environment is, seems to me that that can get into almost, almost anything. Lunchtime use, allowed lunchtime use of something, but something isn't obscene, but it's rude and someone doesn't like it, now are we gonna go down the positive learning environment road? I just think that one's really vague.
I think we have to consider the context of the situation. So if it was a lunchtime, the, you know, what we're, and I'm thinking about my past practice as a principal, and then how I would also guide our directors in guiding our principals. If it was a less structured time, there might be more appropriate use. I think about classroom times where, see, just like this, when you bump a phone. That was not stated. But I can think of times when, you know, students in class, or even my own children, have been maybe using their phones excessively, and it becomes a distraction, and maybe they're reminded by the teacher, hey, gotta put it away, but they keep going to it and keep using it. At that point, that might be some, become something where either the teacher asks for it or the principal asks for it. So it's really when it starts to, just like verbal communication or playing a game or reading a book, it's not necessarily something that's limited to it being an electronic communication device, but when anything really becomes a significant distraction of the learning environment, it could be called into question by the administration or the teacher. or, or the teacher.
So does, does confiscated in the legal definition imply that I can physically take it? I mean, and I understand, again, again, I get it. I understand that in most cases, look, I caught you texting three times in class, you know the rules, please turn it over so we don't have to get the principal. I get, I get that. And I get that most of the time, almost all the time, it would probably be like that. But again, when we say confiscated, what do we, what, what does that, what does that legally entail? I mean, could that include I'm gonna grab it? Because that's what confiscated means in my mind, I guess. You're texting three times, you know the rules, you can't have it. I mean, that we're saying?
Under, under given circumstances, we, we wouldn't forcibly take a phone away from somebody unless it was a threat to others or it was causing a severe disruption or, or violation of policy. For instance, if, if a student were taking inappropriate pictures of somebody unknowingly or something like I, I'm thinking of, again, past practices where it was some dude's taking pictures. At that point, even under those circumstances, we would generally refer to the, the, the school resource officer to be the one that would take it in possession. We're, we're not into, it's, it's really a situation of escalation that we try to avoid where we're trying, where a staff member or administrator is physically taking a phone away from somebody. That's something that we, we avoid at all costs. Again, if somebody's about to hit somebody over the head with a phone, I could see where that could be a weapon type, type piece. But under most circumstances, that would not be something unless it was really extreme circumstances and that's how we would guide our principals. And again, if it was an extreme enough circumstance where it was violation of law or policy, we would make sure that we had our, our school resource officer involved if at all possible.
Okay. But does, does this say that? That's, that would be my question.
Does this policy prohibit a phone from being forcibly removed from a child's hand? It does not.
Okay. But does it, does this policy say that it would be so exceedingly rare, as John was saying, or does this policy just kind of say, you know, it seems to me that the, the wide open gate here is the positive learning environment phrase. That's a much wider phrase than district policy, even though I'm sure district policy says that you can't interfere with class. It just, if, if I, it seems to me like if I wanted, I could say almost anything if I wanted to and put it into positive learning environment.
So, so if we took out, if it just says, if it, the device in any way harms others or is in violation of district policy.
Yeah, I'd probably feel better about that.
Does that allow us then to use discretion on what that child is doing with the phone violating policy?
Well, sure, but I mean, we have, right, because we already have.
And so if you remove that, or do you feel it needs to be?
My concern is not everything a child is doing interfering with the learning environment is gonna be a violation of the policy. And that removes the ability for, from the principal to control that learning environment. And, and simply confiscating, again, it's not searching the phone, it's not permanently removing the phone from the child's possession. The child will get the phone back at some point. But at that point in time, it's interfering with the learning environment, just as if a child was, again, misusing any other instrument or tool or toy in a class, those things could be confiscated during the class.
I guess, except in special circumstances when we're, when we're involving, you know, law enforcement or there's some deeper investigation that's necessary. I guess I'm a little concerned about the, the parent guardian picking it up instead of giving it to the student at the end of the instructional day because now we have issues of can a parent get there or not? Again, I understand the student not getting it back at the end of the day if we're going to the police for, you know.
And I think it depends on frequency and occurrence. I mean, I've had situations where a student has had, you know, a phone is a distraction multiple times, they've been given multiple warnings, and eventually, you know, it's, it's taken by the office. It's the third or fourth time that it's had to come to the office and at that point, for me not to be able to say I'm waiting until the parent comes to pick it up, that, I think that, that limits administrators as well. We've got to balance and allow for, allow for reasonable action.
That's good, but it sounds like you as a principal had probably quite a few times that a student just come on and pick it up at the end of the day and don't, was not have a problem and some times that it was repeated and a parent would pick it up?
I think it depends on certain.
All this doesn't.
But this policy says, what are you saying is this policy says it has to be retrieved by the parent and there is no, we have to find a way to word it that allows the parent to give us permission to give it back to the child legally.
Right. I think there was, who shared the circumstance where they called home that the phone had made its way to the office and it was early in the week and the parent said, good, I'll pick it up on Friday. And so, I mean, I think that there are some, some parents who would prefer that. I think that once it gets to the office though, it's probably hit a pretty high level because knowing teachers and I don't, I, we've got a couple of students here, but typically teachers will deal within the framework of their classrooms and have rules. Am I right or no? And so then kids who violate it often they say, I would assume they say, put it on my desk or, you know, put it away kind of thing and.
I don't really see a lot of phones getting taken away that much.
You don't?
Yeah.
But I think we could word this that allows us the ability to be flexible.
Flexible.
With who it's returned to based upon parent discretion.
Yep.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
But I think you still might even have taking a phone away for a day that, till the end of the day, that doesn't even reach the level of parent call, I would think.
Right, right.
But there would be no need for, you know, and I, I guess, as long as I, you know, it doesn't have to be words meant here, I just wanted to, to get that out there. I have a, I have a.
I think we can bring it back to you next time with some wording that I would adjust.
Just if, if you have another thought while you're on this current.
Yeah, go ahead, I don't wanna.
If, I'm just thinking of the kid who, for whom the phone is a distraction during the school day, yet the parent wants the child to have the ability to either call before or after school for rides and things like that. I mean, could you routinely have a kid just, you know, put your phone on my desk, you'll get it back at the end of the day? I mean.
Some do.
We quite often have arrangements like that. We also encourage quite often situations where a student will turn the phone into the office for the day or have it in a locked area. Unfortunately, sometimes if, if somebody's leaving a, you know, several hundred dollar phone on a desk, we want to also make sure that it isn't accidentally picked up.
Right, that was my next question, but follow up what the liability is.
We're allowing for the, the safekeeping of, of the device since they're, they're generally relatively expensive.
Right. Chris?
I have to muddle it, but I, I proctored ACT tests or I have in the past and the students walked in the door for an ACT test, they turned their phone in, period, during testing and they left, they picked it back up. I would personally support that if the teachers were giving exams in class.
I would too.
It seems to make sense. To me, it's very easy to slip a phone now and take a picture of the pageant. So again, I don't mean to muddle all the work you've done, but.
Yeah, I think we had that conversation the other morning too. I, I think we tried not to bring into this policy the instructional use of phones versus the inappropriate use of phones, because that could be a whole nother long discussion about how we use phones in the classroom or don't or. So I think with this policy, we didn't, we didn't go there, but I think it's good conversation and I think we're having those conversations, so.
Especially.
Yeah, my husband, when he did his board recertification, they checked the phone.
Ex, extracurricular exams, you get, you get bonded, you pull your pants legs up, you turn your pockets out, you put your fit bit in a locker?
Yeah.
Andrew, did you have more?
I, I did.
Go ahead.
But if there's.
Anyone else? Okay, go ahead.
So I'm going to D, the, and let me come back to, come back to C. Okay, so, and again, is this something I'm worried about being a routine daily event? No, of course not. Why do we want to put district officials in the position of, of doing the search? Are, are we kind of making them law enforcement at that point? And why, why is it important to have not just law enforcement, but a district official do a limited search?
Good question. So I first want to start by saying that we have provided a lot of professional development for principals regarding searches of cell phones. We've, they have had information provided at the principal's meeting as well as in my legal updates, we have provided information for them. So this is not a subject that we take lightly, searching student's cell phones. Why we would want a principal to search a cellphone and not law enforcement is because if it is not a law enforcement issue, we don't want to be turning that over to law enforcement. We want to keep that a student disciplinary issue and if there's a student record and it's not a law enforcement record, we don't want that turned over for law enforcement purposes. So for example, cheating in the classroom, I'll use Chris's example. Students have taken pictures of a test, we know that, that violates board policy and we believe that there are pictures on the phone of the test. The principal would do a very limited search for the picture of the phone, of the test and the search would end at that point. There would not be a need to turn that over to law enforcement.
All right, that's.
If, if I may add, I, I'm not sure how we define the term search, at least in my experience, we never had this.
No search.
This is searching, searching the phone for content.
This is searching the phone for content.
Correct. Correct.
And then, okay, C.
Yep.
To, I mean, I like, I like saying that school employees should not request or require a student to disclose the access information for the personal internet accounts, including those that may be accessible, but then we have to the, to the extent prohibited by law. Is that pretty heavily prohibited by law?
So this language is added because I believe it was two years ago, the legislature enacted ninety-nine, I'm sorry, nine ninety-five point five zero, that prohibits an employer from requiring an employee from providing passwords to personal email or social media sites, prohibits landlords from requiring tenants from doing the same and prohibits school districts from requiring students to do the same. So this language is in direct relation to the new law passed by the legislature.
Yeah, so where, does the law have exclusions?
The exclusions would be if the student or an employee accessed that social media using the employer or the school district's network and that information was archived and available on the employer or the school district's network. But it, but there is no exclusions for requiring someone to give you passwords or access.
Okay, then why are we saying to the extent prohibited by law if it's prohibited by law, period?
Again, because if they would access that over the district's network or the employer's network, we would have access to that.
You, you would, but C is just about telling a student you have to give your personal password, right? C is entirely about that? So I would think that's something we should be doing now. Right? If it's in our network and we can access it anyways, then C one to apply because C is, am I wrong, is C not just about giving up the personal passwords? Like, I can't, I, I just, I, I'm trying to think of a time where it's okay, of a time where I would even want district officials knowing a student's personal password. I could see saying you have to log, you, you must log in and show this because we think of pictures of cheating, right? But, I mean, even at, you know, at my, at my work, I go out of my way to not know passwords because then something happens, you know, and people say, oh, no, no, I'll just, I'll just tell you my password. No, no, I'm gonna change your password and yes, you're gonna have to change it back, but, but why? Because I don't want to be the one when something happens to your bank account that, you know, while only two people in the world knew this password, me and Andrew, I mean, you just, it's a situation I don't like to put people in. So I would prefer that just to say school employees shall not request this, period, but I would allow for the fact that you might think of something in the next two weeks that I'm not thinking of.
We'll go back and we'll look at that.
Other.
You'd have to change it.
And then probably something about, probably something about eighteen-year-old, eighteen-year-old students getting their device back. Students who don't have a legal guardian for whatever reason, probably because of their reasons.
We'll look at the language and be.
And that's, that's all I have, so thank you.
Andrew, what else?
Here we go, we'll move that forward and that concludes the teaching and learning work session.
All right, thanks, Katie. Next is organizational support work session and that'll be facilitated by Dr. Wainier.
Thank you. Yeah, quick discussion of fees. Annually, we bring this forward. The purpose behind this is to have a more dialogue in this meeting, a lot of working at the true board meeting. And for the purposes of being able to start to publish the data, share it, include it so families can plan. So there are no recommended changes at this time for two thousand seventeen, eighteen. The only thing that we have included, which we typically do not, are the gate fees at corporate events. So we include that in the information as a supplemental paragraph indicating that's administration's desires to increase gate fees for adults only, not the passes, season passes, not the children or the, the students, but only adult fees from three dollars to four dollars. That would be the only recommended change at this point in time.
Well, and just so you know, it's because we are lower than any other districts in our area. So the last two to three years, the, the activity directors have been working with the conference, both conferences to see where we fall and we are a dollar lower than any of the conference schools. So now we're comparable, we're not over, we're the same. And the same with the students, we didn't raise the student fees because we're comparable.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's, let's, let's get our human resources, anything you'd like to mention about this one?
All right, thank you, Chris. Do you have a closed session or read that motion, closed session?
May I, may I?
Oh.
Is it possible or something?
Uh.
Claire, I want you.
We'll see if it's allowed.
I don't know, just to hit me here with Mike Levy, I believe he's grandfathered in for America's and I do have a project. Now, the next part I'm saying is serious and I must have worked on that for great. Fake news. I think we're all seeing the term more and more and it has become very problematic, people being able to discern what is fake, what isn't. I guess the question I have and I need an answer now, what are we doing to help our students filter through the news to better determine what is truly correct news and, and what isn't? So if we have a report on that later, I'd appreciate it.
We'd be glad to provide information on that and I, I can think of already some, some resources.
Good, all right, thanks, Chris. Special board meeting closed session has been scheduled for Monday, April third, two thousand seventeen, immediately following the agreement of the work session meetings at the district office building pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen twenty-eight five one C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any in public authority over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen twenty-eight five one F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons preliminary considerations of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit personnel matters. The meeting will begin an open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session to provided by law.
So, boo.
Second.
Sandy?
Professor?
Hi.
Laca?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Good morning.
Hi.
Wainier?
Hi. Hi.